I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to say good morning to everyone and welcome to our board meeting. I'd like to say that we're happy to be here at Welborn Elementary. And we hope that as we go through the meeting and afterwards, that through the tour, that everyone enjoys as they go through and see the building in itself.
Amen.
As a board, first of all, I'd like to go over the board norms and protocols. And we want to make sure that we understand that as board members. We want to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We want to follow the best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. To never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at the board workshops as a reminder of how we're supposed to conduct our meetings. To continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So at this time, we would like to do, have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. After which, our board clerk will do the roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Yeager.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the regular agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the regular agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It has been approved. At this time, we're going to have a community comment coming from Ms. Janie Humphries, board member.
It's with heavy heart that I read this letter to you. Dear fellow board members, KCKPS employees, community members, and especially my babies. I have been privileged to serve my community in many ways. The years I have served as a Board of Education member have been closest to my heart. I have always enjoyed working on behalf of my babies. They are the future of our neighborhoods and city. I've been here when they graduate from parents as teachers, all the way to high school graduations. I've seen new teachers become veterans and veterans become retirees. Due to recent life changes, I will be moving and need to focus on my recovery and health. I will not be able to represent our community in the way I feel is important to do so as a Board of Education member. With deep regret, I must announce that I will be resigning my position on the Kansas City, Kansas Schools Public Board of Education, September 9th, 2019. I am charging all of you to take good care of my babies for me and to take care of each other. Sincerely, Brenda C. Jones, AKA Ms. Purple.
Thank you. I'd like to say that we're really sorry to hear of this situation coming up, but we know that one's own health is most important. And so, we at some point hope that in the future that we can see more of her once she is much better.
Mm-hmm.
So at this time, we will now have reports coming from the superintendent.
Madam President, Greg, do they have to make a motion and accept her resignation?
Well, it came up in community comments. We probably should, there will need to be a formal motion by the board to accept her resignation and a motion to approve it. Probably technically, there should be a motion to amend the agenda to add that item first.
All right, could we get a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of former Brenda Jones, board member?
So, second.
It's been moved in second that we accept, that we do have the amended agenda in acceptance of Brenda Jones' resignation. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion has been passed. Thank you.
I think now technically, it would be a motion to actually approve the resignation.
Okay, so now can we have a motion to approve the resignation of Brenda Jones as board member?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the resignation of Brenda Jones as board members. All those, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion has been passed. Thank you. Now we'll have the reports from the superintendent.
I'd say the Kansas City Board of Education will receive an update from Colette Chaney, principal of Welborn Elementary School.
Good morning, board and staff members. We're so excited to have you again at Welborn Elementary. Some of you all were here the other day when our students presented tours, and we'd be more than willing to take any of you around to our different classrooms. At Welborn, we have about 541 students enrolled as of today. And of those students in first through fifth grade, we have four classrooms in each of those grade levels for classroom teachers. In kindergarten, we have five. And so, we thought that by doing five classrooms in kindergarten, that we would have lower numbers for our babies. But it turns out, this beautiful building that you built us has brought more new babies. And so, we have 19 in every one of our kindergarten classrooms and growing. We got new ones yesterday, so we'll know our total count, of course, with student count on September 20th. At Welborn, we know that our students are, more than a test score, that our standards are very important. And we're teaching at the standard every single day. But we found that it's not just IQ, but EQ that is very important at Welborn. So one of our goals at Welborn has been to do whole-brain teaching. And you'll notice, if you come into our classrooms, that our students are learning the standards through whole-brain. So it's not just the cueing that you'll hear, but it's also students learning the standards with whole-brain gestures and voice. And so then they're teaching their peers. Because we believe that if we educate our students both emotionally and in the standards, that they will be better leaders for our country. And we know they can be those leaders. So at Welborn, we believe that we're the passport to possibilities for our students. Thank you.
I'd say the Kansas City Board of Education adopt authorizing resolutions to refinance bonds as submitted by Dennis Covington, chief finance officer, and as recommended by myself, superintendent of schools.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I have with me our managing partner, Piper Jeffrey, to go over this agenda, Mr. Dustin A.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good seeing you again. I will say, just as a side note, it's, we're not often, don't often get into buildings that we help finance. And I would say this is a very beautiful building. District should be very, very proud of it. And I'm just very, very impressed. I told the principal here of just the demeanor and the energy walking into the building this morning. So just wanted to give you those comments. Really, any financing that we've done before, as you're aware, we've always talked about what the objectives are when we do look at financings. And this is really no different. Obviously, the district has done a very, very good job of maintaining a solid financial position and a financial plan in the bond and interest fund. And anything that we look at and do from a planning perspective is intended to put the district in a better, future financial position as well. As you may be aware, and as indicated in the packet in front of you, interest rates are once again at all-time record lows. And so as a result of that, we've been having some internal conversations over the past two or three months, talking about planning and objectives and options for the board to consider. And so we wanted to visit with you about some of those options and objectives here this morning. As you can see, again, interest rate charts as we go through this packet, again, record lows. You can see probably from the very first page, rates since 1987 have been higher than their current levels 99.24% of the time. So again, it's actually pretty remarkable that we're back at these levels, obviously. And that's the reason why we're visiting with you this morning. The second page of that packet is again, just another chart illustrating what's happened in the last year. Very, very important. If we were not in this market environment, we would not necessarily be having these conversations again. From a planning perspective, there's really kind of two different components. And I actually included a summary page, which I believe is page three of your packets. So really, two different components. As you're well aware, in the election in 2016, the voters approved the issuance of $235 million worth of bonds to fund the projects. At that time, the board only authorized and issued $227 million of the $235 million. So there are still $8 million left to be issued to fund the remaining balance of the projects. Again, those are projects that are in process or already committed to. And if I recall from your board meeting agenda packet, the end of August, I think there was an update on the construction, construction of the budgets, which hold around $233 million, $235 million. The issuance of the balance, $8 million, may want to be considered in light of current market interest rates, number one. But number two, obviously, is to fund what's already been committed by the district to complete from a construction standpoint. The estimated rate on those bonds is 3.4% over a 28-year period. And again, it's just funding what's already been committed by the district to construct. The second component is refinancing, and very, very comparable to us thinking about refinancing a mortgage. We're looking at basically keeping the term of the bonds exactly the same. Only thing we're looking at is substituting in new interest rates for old interest rates and realizing interest cost savings over the life of the bonds. What's different from a mortgage, though, is when we have bond issues, we're allowed to refinance portions of bond issues. Okay, we don't have to refinance the entire thing. So again, we're not refinancing all 227 million. We're only refinancing the bonds of that original bond issue that produced the most savings to the school district. That amount, so of the 204 million that's eligible to be refinanced, we're only refinancing $122 million worth of those bonds. And I think that's important because from a strategic perspective, over time, if we, if rates continue to be at record lows in a year, or two years, or three years, it provides additional opportunities for the district to consider refinancings at future dates to save additional dollars on the bonds that were not being refinanced at this time. I also think it's, you look at interest rates, again, so I think from an analysis perspective, we're really trying to evaluate every single bond maturity of the bond issue, determining what produces the most savings. The average rate of the bonds that are proposed to be refinanced are 5.39%. The estimated rate based upon current market conditions is 2.95%. So as a result of that, the total savings is about $27.7 million is the estimated total savings to the school district for only refinancing the portion of the bonds that make the most sense to refinance at this time. And again, the $27.7 million is net of all expenses. So they're all obviously expenses that are incurred from a bond transaction. Those expenses range from 1.25% to 1.4% of the amount financed. And the $27.7 million is net of those expenses. So it's net savings to the school district. Obviously, thinking long-term, when we look at savings and options, I mean, ultimately, we want to put the district in a better, future financial position. Obviously, realizing savings of $27.7 million over the life of the bonds provides additional flexibility from a budget perspective, mill levy management perspective, and capital project perspective in future years. So again, I always go back to saving, the savings is great, but are we making sure we're putting the district in a better, future financial position and giving you more flexibility on all those different levels going forward? So with that, there is a process to go through, and no different than what we've done in prior bond issues. The resolution before you this morning authorizes the process to start. Now, what we don't control is interest rates. Okay, so we can start this process, and if the interest rates were to change where the savings did not justify moving forward, there's no commitment by us or the board to move forward with the transaction. If market rates go up, we just continue to monitor things. At the time they go down, we'll reevaluate and give you an update and proceed at that time. If rates maintain at their current levels, obviously, we'd be in a position to lock in interest rates prior to your next board meeting in October. I think it's October 7th or 8th. At that point in time, you'd have another resolution in front of you, which would be a formal resolution, which would contain all the final terms of the financing. At that point in time, you know what the final savings is. As you would expect, the $27.7 million is estimated at this time. We don't know that until we actually lock in the interest rates. I've seen as high as 30 million, and I've seen as low as 23 million, just based upon movements in market interest rates here in recent weeks. So our goal, obviously, is to monitor things and lock in rates as soon as possible, if the market allows. The resolution also allows the board to give authorization to the board president and the clerk to execute what's called a bond purchase agreement. And that execution of that agreement allows you to lock in rates on any date prior to a board meeting date. So it gives us flexibility to react and respond to market conditions on any date between now and your next meeting in October. And that process is outlined on the very last page of the packet. With that, I'm glad to stand and answer any questions.
You explained it very well. Thank you.
Madam President?
I have a question, please. Thank you. And good morning. So, I guess what, what, we're a quick study. But what I would have, from just your comments, you've been having these conversations for two to three months with our people, I guess?
We started, we started the conversations in the budget process, working on the mill levies and the management and the long-term options. The market really started moving the first part of August.
It would have been nice, in my opinion, for us to have had some preliminary comments from you. I mean, this is not confidential information. So since it's our bonds, I would have appreciated Dr. Faust, Mr. Covington, to have kind of massaged these as you have. That's one comment. The other, so, help me understand this, since you did not, you just, you gave us this figure, but it's not, I would imagine it could have been number two. You say we're financing $122 million?
Those are the amount of bonds being paid off, refinanced, $122 million. The actual issuance of bonds is higher than that. And some of the details of the financing, when we do advanced refinancing, so we put the proceeds from a new bond issue into an escrow account. That escrow account has to be funded at a level to pay the interest on the bonds that were refinanced between now and the redemption date of the bonds, plus retire the $122 million on the redemption date. So the amount of the financing is actually $157 million, if I recall.
So that's the amount to, to the paperwork? To refinance, the process?
To refinance the bonds that are being refinanced, to fund the escrow with enough cash to pay off the bonds and to pay for all costs of issuance related to the bonds.
Okay, so the cost is not, would not be 122 million, it would be 157?
That's, that's-
That would include the escrow amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, again, as I say, we're a quick read, but, but anyway. So of the remaining, what's the remaining bonds that are not eligible? What's the remaining amount that's not eligible to be refinanced?
The amount not being refinanced is 104 million, 640,000 is not being refinanced.
Okay. So is that then, and the interest on those is what?
The average interest, I don't have that in front of me. The average interest rate to those, I'd suspect is right around 4.75%, if I'm looking just ballpark.
So help me understand, excuse me, that the estimated savings, how do we, how do we identify those savings? How do you capture those savings?
So it's basically, we're taking the maturities that we're refinancing. So we're refinancing, refinancing the bonds that are during 2042 through 2047. So again, from bond issue perspective, we can kind of pull out the maturities of every bond issue that are the highest interest rates and produce the most savings for the school district. So we're refinancing those bonds of that original bond issue, and those rates are above five, you know, five and a half percent. So we're refinancing those, and by doing so, we save money on an annual basis, because now we're going from a 5.5% interest rate down to a 2.95% interest rate. So it generates an interest cost savings to the school district on an annual basis.
So how do we, how does John Q. Public, I like to use that phrase, how does John Q. Public see the savings?
Well, so the savings is really more from mill levy management perspective, right? So the savings will end up, from a budgeting perspective, you'll have less debt service to pay on an annual basis. The key from a financial perspective and planning perspective is you're thinking long-term financial plan, right? So as we realize there's savings over, on an annual basis over the next 28 years, it's going to give you as a Board of Education more flexibility from a mill levy management perspective, budgeting flexibility, and obviously then future capital planning flexibility as well.
So this, this activity does not, it only addresses the, I'll say, the second bond we're paying, not the first on the, that we still have a balance on.
It's only addressing a, refinancing a portion-
Correct, correct. But only the portion of the 235 that-
Yes.
Built the buildings.
So we're only, we're only refinancing, think about 227 million was issued.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to carve out 122 million of that and refinance that into a new issue. The balance of that stays in place as it currently is.
Okay.
And of that balance that remains in place, we still have $104 million that the district can consider refinancing at future times based upon market conditions. So we're trying to provide a plan that gives the district flexibility, not only to capture savings in this market environment and maximize what's available, but also then reconsider and look at future refinancings in future years, if there's additional savings opportunities to consider.
And it's interesting that you would say, you know, again, we're talking 2042, 2047, we won't be here. So we're talking future generations for our community as far as paying, paying this off.
You are, you're really taking a decision to now, to obviously save money on an annual basis from interest expense, but also obviously put the district in a much better future financial position as well.
So does the 157 account for any other processing fee, any bond?
No. No, it's really, the 157 million is just to refinance and put an escrow account, the money to pay the interest on the bonds that are being refinanced between now and the redemption date, plus pay off the $122 million, plus pay the cost of issuing the bonds. That's what the 157 million does. The additional portion of it is the $8 million. So the additional portion would be the issuance of the $8 million to fund the balance of the project, the construction project. That's really the first component of it.
So bond attorneys get, there's no charge?
That's all included in here.
That's included.
Yes, ma'am. It's not of all expenses.
And that's the, that's the 35 million?
No, no.
What's that, what's the, what's the cost of bond attorney?
Yeah, the cost of issuance is about 1.25% to 1.4% of the amount being financed, which equates to about 1.8 to $2 million of total cost that are reflected in the $27 million savings.
Okay.
The $27 million savings is net of all expenses related to the transaction, and it factors in the amount of money that goes into the escrow account to repay the bonds. But there's really two issues, there's really kind of two issues. Number one is, we still have to fund the remaining balance of the construction projects approved by voters in 2016. So that's the $8 million component. And then the second component is then just the refinancing component and refinancing for savings.
So the action that we may or may not take today, number one, what's the, what's the urgency?
It's really just a board direction, and we want to make sure we're presenting the information and make an informed decision about current market interest rates and how it impacts your existing bonds, and how it impacts your ability to maintain in future mill levy management flexibility. And so it's really market-driven, it's a market-driven process. Again, if the market changes, which we don't control, we obviously reevaluate and consider something different on a later date.
No, we wish if we could control the market.
We, yeah.
We wouldn't be here.
I would agree. I would agree.
So where is the, so in this, in this scheme of things, is there a, is there a process that you could reduce the time?
We've actually, we're going to try to reduce the process as quick as possible. And in fact, we're in a position that if the board does decide to move forward this morning, we're in a position to hopefully be in the market by the end of, end of September.
No, reduce the time of the bonds payment. Is there some way you can redirect the savings so that you can cut the time, the years off?
That's a, that's a really good question. I do think that could be an option in future years. I think with, with the options available to the school district and thinking about long-range planning and options, I think when we consider paying off bonds early, we also need to be thinking about, how does it impact our long-term capital improvement plan? What other projects would we need to be considering in the next 10 or 15 years that we may need to issue bonds for? And I think until those questions are known within the next 10 or 15 years, you probably want to can stay with the same term of financing in light of where current market interest rates are.
But we're not staying with the same terms of financing?
The term is this, the payment structure is the same. So we're not changing the payment structure. The final maturity is still going to be the same as what it was originally.
That's what I'm saying. You couldn't negotiate, reduce payments, reduce time?
That would be a decision for the board to make. If you wanted to pay this off sooner, what's that's going to happen is if we pay it off sooner, we're going to make our annual payments higher, which could put mill levy pressure on the school district to raise its mill levy to support bond.
With the savings, you couldn't redirect the savings?
That would be-
Crafted in such a way?
That would be a board decision, and actually part of the mill levy management process and options.
I know it's our decision, but you're presenting us the options. And so I'm saying, since you know the manners, the avenues of change, did you not consider that to present to us also as an option?
So I would say that based upon our current mill levy situation and status and creating future budget flexibility for mill levy management and for future capital requirements and needs, this, when we did all of our modeling, this provided the best solution to main that objective. If that objective is different, then there certainly would be different options to consider.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for presenting this. My financial advisor called me and offered me a lower interest rate because of the rate. So yay. I appreciate what you do, and I thank you, Dennis, for looking at options, because that's what we charge you to do as CFO, is to continually look for ways how we can improve. And so I think it's a good thing, and as you said, it's important for us to act quickly because the rates could change at any minute. And when my mortgage person called me, called, instead of sending an email, because we have that relationship, said, hey, we can continue to watch the rates, but as you mentioned, if it goes lower, then give that ability of the president to be able to say, hey, lock in this lower rate since it changed due to the analysis. So I like those options. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. How'd you go about selecting the bonds to be refinanced?
That's a, that's a really good question. So in our financial analysis, historically speaking, we look at every, every single bond maturity of the bond issue. And industry standards and guidelines suggest that when the, when the savings on a present value basis equals 3%, okay, it's oftentimes a good time to consider refinancing or looking at refinancing. And so when we look at every single, so if we look at 28 bond maturities of the 2016 bond issue, we show exactly what that present value savings is for every single bond maturity. We went through that process, and we said, okay, right now, if the industry standard's 3% present value savings, we're taking savings that are 10% present value or higher. So you're, the amount of present value savings is well above the industry standards from a threshold perspective. And so we're taking the maturities that produce the most savings to the school district at this time, and then we're leaving the ones that don't, because there's going to be other future opportunities to do that in the future. But just to give you some perspective, so this is more just the analytics that we go through to help make that decision. If industry standard says 3%, right now, we're at 14% average present value savings to the school district based upon the 27.7 million. So well above the standard.
Thank you.
Great question.
Any other comments, questions?
My only comment, in lieu of what 45 keeps telling us that everything is okay. And then when you watch things on television with economic reports, the uncertainty and the instability bothers me, that when I hear people say what you say, I question it, because right now, everything seems to be topsy-turvy. When you look at the car industry, you look at the housing industry, and you look at retail, things are real shaky. So I get nervous when I see people say what you say. Now, I'm not saying you're not an expert, but it just makes you wonder, and you really don't know where the truth is and what's in your best interest. Because right now, that- Because right now, that instability just kind of scares me. I'm just your average Joe. I don't know, I don't have the.
You make, you make actually a very good point, and I think what's interesting is a lot of this, this stuff going on in the marketplace has resulted in, in rates going to where they are, right? So a lot of the uncertainty and the concerns from an economic perspective are a reason why rates are where they're at. And in fact, you know, there's probably a 90% probability on the 24th of September that the Fed will decrease short-term lending rates as well. And I, I will say, and I think it's very, very important as we think about interest rates and, and the timing and what may happen is, about three weeks ago, again, this is more just industry's analysis, the 10-year treasury note, the yield on it fell below the two-year treasury note yield. And when that's happened, historically speaking, a recession has occurred within two years. So again, this is more, more analytical data that we look at when we're looking at bond interest rates and where we are and what those trends are. But I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to thank you for coming and presenting the information, and I do appreciate each of our board members asking questions so that we can learn more. And I do like the idea that you said that you researched to find the best solution for us, for, to be able to make the decisions that we need to do as a board. So again, I say thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I need someone to make a motion that we do adopt authorizing resolution for refinancing bonds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt authorizing resolution to refinance bonds. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me, and I don't know if I'm out of order, you'll correct me. I'd like a rule call vote, please.
Okay.
Carol Bram?
Yes.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Jenny Humphries?
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
No.
Davina Nguyen?
No, and I'll qualify that I would have appreciated having had this conversation, the two or three months that you all have had, so thank you.
Stacy Aker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So it has been passed, we will move on with the replacement and maintenance facility. Thank you so much.
Have a nice day.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the addition of the replacement maintenance facility to the bond work package just submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning again. The item before you is for us to replace the maintenance hut that was torn down during the construction of the school, and Mr. Doug Clements here to explain it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam President, Dr. Faust and boards, good to see you here in bright and sunny Wellborn Elementary. Do we have presentation? Guess not. Is it not available? Okay. All right, well, does this thing take a flash drive? Does it or not?
Don't you want the Doug President, this presentation?
Okay. You all might remember back on June 26 of 2018, Dr. Mather and, providing some history here, Dr. Mather and some of the architects from, actually that night there were architects from HTK and Hollis and Miller came and presented to the board, actually the Carl B. Bruce Project, which is replacing Northwest Middle School at 118th and Parallel. As part of that presentation, they did talk about how, in order to get that Carl B. Bruce Building built and leave Northwest Middle School operational during construction, the, the new building was going to move to the south, so all of those buildings that were there at 118th to the district support buildings, the central kitchen, storeroom, and the maintenance hut, were going to all be demolished. So as part of the process of planning and other projects, at West Park Elementary School, which is the new where West Middle School was, we tore that down, and now we're building a new West Park Middle School. We had included in our preliminary site development plan, a pad site to be the location of a replacement maintenance facility. So we've gone through the process, we've had the architects bring those plans far enough along that J.E. Dunn can provide a estimate of construction to replace that building. So we had about 15,000 square feet in the old facility, we're going to replace that with a little less than 10. In three buildings, it's very functional to get our trucks in and out of and store, tractors, our Bobcat Skidsteer trailers, snowplows, Sanders, all of the equipment that we use to maintain the school's properties. And that'll be just north of the new West Park Elementary School in that facility off that lane that comes off of Georgia. The estimate that we have, I assume you have this information from J.E. Dunn for the construction is 2.1, and then there's the design fees that would be on top of that. So really what we're here today is to ask, really to formalize the process and actually get this into the bond projects, so now J.E. Dunn could actually then go take this and get, and bid that out, and be able to at a future date, present a GMP, and then the amendment that we do to move that GMP into the bond projects.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, I do, I do. And this, this site is the, the old West.
West Middle School.
And are we, are we comfortable with the zoning in that area that would be able to support some, a development?
Yes, we've actually gone through the process to talk to the city, they've approved it, we've talked to them about the type of buildings that we're building, they've given us approval on that. We actually at a point now where we can pull a permit once we actually get the approval and get the estimate from J.E. Dunn.
Have we looked at, I don't know what plans we have for the old Parker High School, oh, Old Parker Elementary School. What are we going to do with that site? I mean, why can't we look at?
That, that is to be determined. I think there's probably some future use for, to be honest with you, right now we're using that building to store a bunch of the furniture that we pulled out of Coronado and West Middle School. So that, that is to be determined of what was going to hap, actually happen to Parker.
We're doing some research, we're looking at a Spanish immersion.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay. I'm good. I'm good.
So this is going to hold the equipment that we're storing in Armoredale? The temporary?
Right now, we are storing this equipment in various locations throughout the district, yeah.
But some of it is the stuff in Armoredale, and the special, not in the shop facility there, not the warehouse, but the.
The one that we were going to lease for a year?
Yeah, we leased.
We did not wind up leasing that. By the time we got back to that leasing agent, and actually he was, after the board meeting, he was out of town for a couple of weeks, they leased that entire building and that became no longer.
Okay, but that's, that's the type of equipment, though.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Dr. Nguyen?
Well, then that brought, thank you, Madam President, that brought another question to my mind. So where is the equipment that we had planned to put in the building that we approved to lease that you ended up not leasing?
We've, we've got it tucked in just about every little nook and cranny that we can find anywhere throughout the districts. We've got some of it up at our North Central Office, tucked into what we call the corrals on the north and south side of our doors. Some of it is sitting outside that I prefer to have inside. We do have a fairly new Kubota tractor, we have found a spot for it to be inside, but our Baco Skidsteer loader, that has all just remained outside.
And the building on Osage is full? Cherry, Cheyenne, wherever it is.
Oh, Cheyenne, the, the storeroom, yeah, that, there is a, those are dock doors there. There is one door on the west side for, already park our van, but yeah, it would not house all of that equipment, no. Yeah.
So you're, you're wanting to put this expenditure into the bond?
Yes.
What was the language, where is that bond resolution? Where would, you know, what's the language of that bond resolution? Does this, is this consistent with the language of the bond resolution?
Yes, yes.
What does it say? Where, where would one find that bond resolution?
You're talking about the very initial.
Correct.
You know, to be honest with you, that I'd have to, I don't know where we'd find that right now, but I do know that in there it talks about the improvements for the benefit of the students and the schools, and since this was torn down to build Carl B. Bruce, I think we do feel like it's.
So generic enough to be consistent?
Yes.
Because that's, that, that's the, that's the break.
Yeah.
That we, we could not do it. Greg, where is that, that length, that bond resolution?
In, in one place it would be is on the prior board minutes, I'd have to go back and look, I don't have it here, I was actually trying to look as you were talking in the library, I don't see it as a standalone in the library, so the quickest way I could try to find it would be go back to when we approved it at the board meeting and find the resolution there, although I know the document exists as a standalone.
Yeah, perhaps we need to have it quick, easy access, because I couldn't find it, I don't know where we filed it.
I would suggest we pull it and put it on the library so the board and everybody else can find it fairly easily.
Got that?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it is consistent, otherwise you're asking us not to, to properly, to break the law.
Understood.
Well, Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question.
Ma'am.
Now, once you build it, you move all the stuff out once Carl B. Bruce is ready, then what will we do with the building after that? Do we have plans to use it? We just don't want it to be just an empty building sitting there?
Northwest Middle School?
No, this building that you're building to store things, once you clear everything out of that, then what happens to this building?
That's the actual build, they're going to build, that'll be the forever building.
Okay, but I'm just saying, what's the future use of it? Would we, you know, you just don't want to build it, and then we take everything out and move it to other places, so what's the future use?
No, we're, we're building it to move everything in, you know, we have everything kind of tucked in all these nooks and crannies, so this will become our replacement for the hut, which is already demoed. So this becomes our permanent storage facility, and we'll have a, a salt dome kind of sent, it's very good because it's centrally located in the district, so that our guys can go and, and do their snow plowing and, and spreading salt and sand.
Okay. Has there been any negative results in storing things outside?
There has, there has. We had a catalytic converter stolen off of a, a truck. And we actually had a trailer get stolen early recently, just within, we discovered it just the last week. We actually had it tucked in the fenced area in the courtyard at Washington High School, and unfortunately during construction, and we are still pursuing this with our construction partners, why that trailer got moved without our knowledge, but then that trailer has gone away.
Okay, thank you.
It was a enclosed trailer that we had put together for kind of a rapid response for mostly plumbing breaks, so we could get everything there, you know, pumps and generators and that kind of stuff quickly.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, so you have cameras and security already in the design?
Yes, and I thought I saw Chief Horn here, he is pursuing that. Yes, we do have information that he's looking at. Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions? Okay, we need to have a motion to approve replacement maintenance facility.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve replacement maintenance facility. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve health insurance renewal effective January 1, 2020, as is submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and Eli Tushman, Chief Human Resources Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Okay, during the budget process, you all can recall that we looked at all our employee insurance, and we had a no rate increase for our employees for our health benefits. And so this, this resolution is to approve us continuing to offer our benefits through Blue Cross, Guardian, and Superior as our main carriers for health, dental, and vision.
Any comments?
So to clarify, although the renewal is a 3% increase with Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's no increase to the employees.
Correct. We covered that increase in the budget.
Any other comments? So we need to have a motion to approve health insurance renewal effective January 1, 2020?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion has been passed.
Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item an update on student data as submitted by Dr. Lynette Hookfin, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning to everyone, good morning to the board, to our superintendent, and to all of our great staff members who are present. So today I'm going to talk about the demographic and performance data, and so this is data based upon the 2018-19 school year. I want to let you know that as of now, we have approximately 23,548 students in our district. The majority of our students are at the elementary level, and if you can take a look, I'm so sorry. Take a look here. There you go. So we have 10 early childhood sites, 30 elementary schools, and we have eight middle schools, four comprehensive high schools, and we have one college prep high school in our district. This is a very important slide right here. Let's take a look at our trends. So according to this information, since the 2009-10 school year, there's been an increase of almost 4,000 scholars in our district. That's huge. But now let's take a look at the trends, what's happening in KCKPS. We have a decrease in our African-American students, and we have a large increase in our Hispanic students, and also in our ELL population. What does this mean? This means that we already started out of the gate as educators, understanding these trends and making sure that we are providing professional development in a strategic and meaningful way to support our teachers and principals. As far as our increase in students who earn proficient scores, we had a 4.3 increase in ELA and a 6.2 increase in mathematics. Of course, this is a draft, of course, there's more room to grow. This didn't happen overnight. But what we plan to do as a team, we plan to work hard to ensure, again, that our strategic plans are in place to increase student performance. Our four-year graduation rate has increased, this is great, by 8.9%, but our ACT scores have remained flatline. And you already know that our superintendent has charged us to do this work. As far as our demographic data, our female and male population, it's, it's almost equal, 51.7% of our students are males, and 48.3 of our students are females. As far as the ethnicity breakdown, again, this graph clearly shows you that there's an increase. If we take a look at this circle graph, now, majority, the half of our scholars in KCKPS are Hispanic. Again, a trend that is continuously growing. As far as our special education population, that's, this number is 17.3%. Our general ed is 82.7. If you take a look at our free and reduced lunch scholars, the majority of our students in our district are considered free and reduced lunch students at 70.4%. Again, let's take a look at this ELL population. Here, the number doesn't look as large because it's 38.0%, but again, if the trend continues to grow, this will more, more than likely be half of this circle in a few years. Let's take a look at the slight increase that we've had in our data overall, ELA, from the 2018 school year to the 2019 school year, in ELA, 14.3 to 18.6%. Slight growth here. Again, a work in progress. Also in mathematics, a larger gain than ELA, 11.4% to 17.6%. Room to grow. Looking at the flatline scores of our ACT numbers, we are definitely making progress in this area in terms of providing support. We have our Diploma Plus program, we have principals who clearly understand the sense of urgency to drive this work in our district. We're proud about it because, again, we started with a bang and will continue the momentum. The graduation. The graduation rate, there's been an increase. But we know that in the state of Kansas, there is such thing as the success rate as well. We just don't stop there with the overall percentage of our graduates in our district. We want to make sure, we wanna make sure that everyone is clear at our campus sites that we track our scholars two years after they graduate. So in terms of post-secondary readiness, we just don't stop with our final overall graduation rate in our district. So this is imperative to our school leaders. And it's a challenge, but yet, we already know this information and we can always be proactive about the work. And it's challenging to track students two years after they graduate. But again, with our programs that are in place, with our leaders understanding the work that we're involved in, we are very, very optimistic about this work. I'll move on.
One question while you're on this slide.
Sure.
Could you go back to the state achievement? We made quite a bit of gap there of increase. Could you help explain how our rates in 2018 in English language arts went from 14.3% to 18%? And our mathematics, it went from 11.4% to 17.6%. How do we, how do we get that far of a jump?
Well, that is a great question. And a great question that I'm very proud to answer. I wasn't a part of the team last year, but I can tell you that our superintendent was, along with the principals who drove the work. At the elementary level, we saw the most growth. We saw that our instructional improvement officers had growth within their networks. And so with that being said, we know that the work can be done. But again, the superintendent's charge is to ensure that there is more growth. So we're looking at the fact that we could possibly, not possibly, let's go ahead and claim it, double-digit growth within our district. If the superintendent did this work with the leadership team and what was in place last year, just think of what can occur this school year.
Right.
Right. With all of the folks who are already in place, Diploma Plus, the Student Services Department, the IIOs, the fact that we are zooming in on the strengths of our principals and also building on the skills that, what it takes in order for them to be instructional leaders, I'll say it again, instructional leaders in KCKPS. The work is being driven by the superintendent, who is being very and extremely intentional about every professional development program that is put out there, about the work that we do, the work that I do. And also, he's holding us accountable.
Mm.
So when you speak about the slight gains, this is just the beginning.
All right.
And I'm excited about this work. And what we cannot do as a team is, we can't be so slow to celebrate this work.
That's right.
Again, if this was done at this level with just monitoring instruction that's taking place on campuses and tweaking the work, just think what is going to happen after the superintendent's curriculum design of the framework, ensuring that the curriculum is aligned to the state standards. We're really coming out the gate this year. So when you speak about the slight increase, and you're right, let's celebrate that. It was because of the drive of the leadership within our district and the fact that our school principals are buying into the work. They're owning it. And we have to be proud about that as well.
Thank you.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
On your composite, on your slide about the ACT composite.
Sure.
Okay, and went from, in 2017, if my memory serves me correctly, went from two, I mean, 16.6, to in 2008, it's 16.2.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That's a decrease, right?
Now, let's talk about this.
Okay.
Flatline means that you also have to look at the number of students who were tested as well.
Right.
So in this particular bucket, our 11 grade scholars are tested. So it goes back to, what's the overall number of students who've been tested? So when we say flatline, meaning that 16.6, 16.2, we'll go back and we'll look it up and we'll give you the definite numbers of students who are actually tested every school year, if that will help.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Great answer.
And Madam President, over here.
Yes.
Likewise, first, we have to congratulate.
Yes.
The staff.
Yes.
It's been a long time. But, and this was asked of you in the meet and greet meeting, when can we expect to see the subgroup data?
So in terms of the subgroup data, you have to understand that this is draft information.
Okay.
In October, we will nail the definite numbers for you. So instead of putting out draft numbers, again, this is our overall big picture, you'll see definite numbers when we get our.
Hard numbers.
Numbers, hard numbers in October.
Thank you.
Coming soon.
I had a question.
Yes.
Again, I wanna applaud you. I think this is awesome. If we can do this with our superintendent and the principals and the teachers, well, what are we doing to get the parents involved in that? I don't know if that's coming up, but how do you get them? Because if we can get the parents to buy into it as well, just think what we can do. If we're doing this at this level, then how do we get them more engaged?
Ms. Page, that this work cannot be done without parents. It cannot. So our plan as instructional leaders in this district, we're going to actually hold parent meetings at apartment complexes. This work is too complex to be done without sharing information with our parents. It starts in the home.
All right, here we go.
And it starts with parents understanding that, as a parent, there is a responsibility to ensure that your child is successful in school. So there is no work without the parent partnership. There is no work without the community partnership. What we understand this school year is one band, one sound. Everybody has the same message and we're off and we're moving in the same direction that cannot be done with our parents. So our plan is to make sure at the school sites, we are sharing the work that is happening in the classroom with our parents. You'll see better websites as well. I am now going to move on to the Diploma Plus presentation. And before I begin this presentation, I would like to thank Dr. LaShonda Irvin for driving this work. Again, the people who are in place are starting the work with monitoring what plans are actually Actually, I need to go back one. If you could help me and support me with that, we just skipped a little. All right. So we have 18 career academy pathways in KCKPS. How exciting is that?
Yay.
Yes, it's extremely exciting. And not only is the excitement and the number of pathways that we have in our district, it's all about the quality and not just the quantity here. Meaning that we can get all excited about the number that we have. But again, the leadership of our district is challenging us to ensure that all programs, all pathways are with a quality. So we just don't want to be the district that throws out the number of pathways that we have and get all excited about that. We wanna make sure as board members, as community members, you can visit our campuses and see the quality of the work. Not only the quality, but what's actually being reproduced in the work, the fruit of the labor. Meaning that the students who get access to these programs and the number of students who will help us increase our post-secondary readiness by attaining associate degrees. We have a biomedical health science program, and this is very exciting because this ensures that our students are very engaged in hands-on science lessons. As far as our construction and design program, there's a huge update at Wyandotte High School. This strong push, again, exciting work, we're making sure that there's an upgrade within safety and the equipment that is being used by our scholars at Wyandotte High School. Engineering, Project Lead the Way, this is exciting. This is a program that is now offered at all five of our high schools. We can clap for that. And as the superintendent mentioned in his presentation, he stated that, you know, we're pushing for AP exams. So this program will help our students prepare for the test, in other words, to receive this certification. Now, exciting news, all middle school buildings have this program. And it's called programming and software, the development, they're creating apps and writing codes. Again, we're serious about this work.
Yeah.
We're starting at the middle school level here.
That's right.
We're just not owning the work at the high school level. There has been a charge to ensure that we are increasing the knowledge and skills of our scholars at the middle school level. Now, we're actually leading to pathways, right? Isn't that exciting? Again, the work of superintendent, his vision, and ensuring that no longer is the day where we put all of this weight at the high school level.
That's right.
Right, so our elective courses at the middle school level will be geared to flow right into those pathways in our high schools. This is exciting news. When you think about growing people, building human capacity, this is the way to do it. And we are definitely leading the pack in KCKPS. Our teaching program is aligned to K-State and KCKCC. This is a way in which our scholars who want to be teachers, great educators, they can actually earn the majority of their degree in high school. Isn't this exciting? So this is being offered at Harmon and Slagle, and this is, this is the way to go. When we think about teacher vacancies and the revolving door of teachers in and out of education, we have to expose students at a very early age who are passionate about teaching others, but also being real about the work. Because the day-to-day actions of a teacher can be challenging. But why not expose people at an early age, right? And why not grow our own as what we're doing in, at every level in our district? That's it. Any questions?
I wanna thank you for this information once again to present us with our academies. We've had them in place for a while.
Yes.
At certain schools.
Yes.
It is good to know that we're starting in middle school, which the community has asked, which parents have asked, and what we're seeing as an industry, corporations want students who are, who know the path. Now, of course, all students will not know what path they want to go on.
Right.
Which, when we were here earlier at Woburn, the class I was in, we talked about, it's okay to change your major. It's okay to go in different ebbs and flows. But the goal is, what interests you? You can have multiple careers. So it's really exciting to see and, and know which schools offer what and to know that no matter which school a child goes to, they have options. And we know the more options a student has, the more their mind can be open to possibilities. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. And I wanna leave on a note from the words of our superintendent, excellence is required. Thank you.
All right.
That's okay, that's okay.
One more question.
One more question.
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, from a selfish perspective, you know, we're producing, it sounds like we're producing some, some very quality teachers and for the future. Is there any efforts we're making to retain any of these individuals?
Excellent question. So in terms of teacher retention in our school district, not only this pathway program, but the actual teachers who are serving our scholars at this time, helping them increase their pedagogical skills, classroom management skills, will support the retention of our teachers. See, it's one thing to go into education and know that you love children and want to teach until they arrive with all of their needs, right? And so in order to do that and be successful, you have to be trained professionally. The trends are changing. Our curriculum has changed. The state assessment standards have changed. So in order to keep up, in order to grow our teachers, they have to be trained, they have to be taught, they have to be loved and empowered. And we're doing that in our district. Our IIOs are charging the work where they're actually working side by side with principals as instructional leaders to train our teachers. We're just not letting them go by the hands. So when you speak about the work of retaining people, it's about growing them, working conditions, right? Is the building right for them? Can they teach without as many discipline problems? Do they love being in our district? And it starts with us. So the more we are one team, right, and showing them that this work is possible, the more likely they'll be retained. And so as board, as superintendent, as leaders, we're all a part of the work in retaining teachers on a daily basis. And again, it starts with celebrating them and training them to increase their skills.
Thank you.
I have a question, comment. First, thank you. Thank you for your spirit and thank you for the enthusiasm. That means a lot. Now, I see we're doing middle school, but I would also like to see us do something on the elementary level as well. Because if we can plant the seed early, then we have some hope. You know, we gotta get, if you want them to go to college, after they come out, you start reading books, you talk to them, you nurture, you wear your college shirt, you're taking them to the schools. Can we do that maybe preschool, elementary? I don't know if your plans are.
Well, I can tell you this. Dr. Faust mentioned that KCKPS shall be a high-performing district. When that is put in front of you as a deputy superintendent, I have to think that way. We can't stop at the middle school level. All high-performing districts start in pre-K. Why not us?
Yeah.
Right. Right, why not us? And like Dr. Yeager said, you may not know what you want to be, you may change your ideas, but yet, if the, if our curriculum is rigorous and relevant, we're gonna support students to be successful and having a rich educational experience. And that's what this is about on a daily basis. So can we be a number-one school district in this state? Yes, we can. Can we be one that is top in the nation? Yes, we can. But again, together as a team, parents, you as a board, as a team, and us, it can be done. And I'm excited about this work.
Ms. Page, one of the other things that Dr. Faust has instituted was, within the budget process, all elementary schools must take a college field trip. We funded it and they must take, to expose children to college. So they must take the kids on a college field trip. And it's left up to them as to which grade they take, but it's funded in the budget for them to take a college field trip.
That's good. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hookfin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's really good to see that we are moving in a very positive direction to challenge our students, to support our staff, and to help them to move in a direction whereas we can continue to move on this pathway of success. And then including the community as well as parents is the greatest thing that we could ever do. So thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept a report on Wyandotte County Special Education Data as submitted by Dr. Hookfin, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Kelly Charles, Executive Director of Student Services, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent
I'd like to begin by saying good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Morning to our board members and good morning to Superintendent Faust and our staff members.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, I will provide an overview of the Kansas State Department of Education's ruling around significant. ruling around significant disproportionality in our district. This sanction against our school district resulted from the over-suspension and/or expulsion of African-American students. Resolving this important issue remains a high priority for our department and district. I'd like to begin with an overview, and in that overview, I'd like to start with discussion of a key word for this presentation. And the key word is disproportionality. And the word disproportionality means an over-representation of a certain group of students or a certain group of people. In this case, we're talking about African-American males and exclusionary disciplinary practices. That means out-of-school suspension and/or expulsion. So for the past years, the Kansas State Department of Education has examined the practices of the Wyandotte County Special Education Cooperative data. And they have determined that we have been identified as having significant disproportionality in the following areas. The first is that black or African-American students are out of school for suspensions or expulsions that account for more than 10 days during the past school year, 2017-2018 school year. According to the Kansas Department of Education, this has been a trend for the past three Let's examine our district's data. In this slide, you can see our data for the past three years. In 2016 to 2017, there were 71 African-American students that had been suspended for more than 10 days. In 2017 to 2018, that number reduced to 48 African-American students. And for the 2018-2019 school year, we saw a reduction down to 47. And this still gives us the disproportionality. So viewing this data and understanding the detrimental effects to our students should call all of us to action, because this data tells us a compelling and important story, and I'd have to say, a discouraging story. If you are an African-American student with a disability in KCKPS, you are six times more likely to be suspended for more than 10 days than any other student. And in 2017 to 2018, there were 102 African-American students with disabilities that were suspended for more than 10 days in the state of Kansas. Our district accounted for 49 of them. Almost half came from our district. As I have been saying over the past few weeks, we can and we must do better. So what are our next steps? Sure, the Kansas State Department of Education, with their sanctions, they have given us next steps. But most importantly, our superintendent has challenged us to take action, and action is what we have done over the past few weeks, and will continue to do. So as a result of our disproportionality, the Kansas State Department of Education has said that we should redirect $925,000 in $925,956 of revenue that was previously for special education services. This must now be redirected to general education activities. And the belief is that when we use this money, we can use it to address the root causes. And so, we should do this by taking 15% of federal funds from the KCKPS budget. The funds must target non-identified students, but they can also help students with disabilities. So in addition to the redirection of the funds, our district must also undergo a root cause analysis. And this is an opportunity for various stakeholders to come together and really think about why these suspensions are happening.
That's it.
And so, from the root cause analysis, we have to develop an appropriate action plan for early intervention, drill down to what the factors are that are causing the disproportionality, and determine how we will spend the funds in a meaningful way. And so, when we think about ways to combat this problem, we must consider research-based practices aimed at reducing disproportionality. A few ideas that districts across the nation who have found themselves in the same situation, they have looked at alternatives to suspension. The great thing about this is that in our Department of Student Services, we have a team that's already began that work last school year with trauma-informed practices, and we will continue to do that work in a more meaningful way. Some of the things that we can take a look at, Dr. Hookfin already talked about, with teachers, the first thing is training. Training our teachers in effective classroom management. The research is clear that when we can do this in a meaningful way, when it's sustained, when it is ongoing professional development, that these are practices that can lower suspension rates and reduce disproportionality. We can also look at professional development. Again, not just one month of professional development, but professional development throughout the year on social-emotional learning and restorative practices. And we can also help administration to think of, what is a continuum of discipline practices? So I have a few examples for us. Let's say that a student commits an infraction. Instead of giving a warning, if the student does it again and saying, oh, that's a three-day suspension, we can have a continuum of discipline practices that we help administrators to think through and to think, what might be some of the more milder ways at addressing the And finally, as we look at improving these practices for teachers and administrators, we must also cultivate a culture where these alternatives to suspension can blossom. We need to look at, how do we create caring school communities in climate? As the board talked about, positive relationships with parents are a really good first place to start. Parental involvement. And culturally sensitive and responsive classroom behavior management and instruction. I thank you for your time.
Dr. Charles, you, great presentation.
Thank you.
You mentioned disabilities. Could you characterize disabilities?
I can. So this would be students who are in special education. So students who have an IEP, who would be receiving their education in the general education setting, or maybe their disability is what we would consider ED, emotional disability or emotional disturbance. And these are students who, in many cases, are in the general ed setting, or they may be in a self-contained setting where they really struggle with their behavior. We are seeing that more of these issues are happening at the secondary, so in middle and high schools.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Would you clarify the number of students that would allow us to be removed from this disciplinary action?
That's a good question. We have to, so another piece to this is that the state says, we'll sanction you, but we will also give you support in helping you to understand how to drive your plan and how to combat this issue. So last week, I had a wonderful conversation with our person from the state who will be helping us in this process, and that is one of the numbers that they are crunching, and so we should have that for our next conversation next week. So I do hope to give you that data point soon.
Also, previous to this year, have we been properly rerouting this money, this $900,000? Have we been properly allocating it to these resources?
So...
So this, it was all within the special ed. So what we hadn't been doing is being transparent, basically. So we've known about this, and our special ed director knew about this. Our principals didn't know that this was going on, so no one, we have seven, eight coordinators at each school, all of our schools have coordinators, but the information was not being translated to the schools. So the principals, yes, they were going ahead and suspending kids, but they weren't told that, oh, this child has a disability, which they knew they had a disability, but they didn't, they weren't told that we have to monitor the students who were being suspended. So that was the issue. It was only stopping at the special ed office. And so, that's a problem. And so, in order for us to be fully transparent, the state said, well, we were not even allowed to come into the district and work. So Kelly has been working with the state, and so now, they're supporting, and so, yes, the $900,000, that sanction just came in, I forget what the date was, but they've been telling us, years, stop doing this, stop doing this, stop doing this. And we kept doing this and kept doing it. So, yes, one should know, I mean, as a school principal, we all took special ed class, we all took school law to know the basics, and you're supposed to monitor, but if it's not being delivered from the department, from the department over it, then they're saying that it's okay. If I never tell you that anything, nothing's wrong, then you don't know. So we were doing something that was wrong, so now, these are the things that we are suffering by. The problem is, and I'll go on into it, is that we've just been told that our kids can't do it. We've been told that our teachers, that the teachers can't do it. We have teachers who hadn't been trained and gone to special ed training in six years. Yes, we have children who, we have just not been professionally developing them. So I don't, it's going to take a minute to undo the thinking, and so, yes, there will be some heavy-handed of, yes, you have to do these things, you have to do this, look at the data, you have to do this because of this, this is why we're here. So that doesn't feel good. So you'll hear more from people like, oh, they're making us do that. Well, actually, it's, they'll tell, just refer to their job description, say, this is what you're supposed to do, this is how you do, there's an IEP that supports this. We were asking, and they know, every time I get one of the reports that you get, I ask Kelly, what does the BIP say, the Behavioral Intervention Plan? What does it say? Is there one being implemented? So if it's implemented, then where do we move from here? So that's where we're looking at, and principals are becoming more and more educated on behavioral intervention plans. Our coordinators are becoming more and more educated on behavioral intervention plans, because you just can't suspend a special ed kid just because they do the same thing as a general ed. Because if it's a disability, you know, there are some parameters by law that we have to do. So we are educating everyone, and I know it doesn't feel good on the teaching side. I've been a teacher, and I was like, you know, why is it that this? Well, you know, there are some laws through IDEA that we have to abide for that protect special education, and we just have to know what we have to do. And so, we have 27, I think it's 27 months to correct it or to fix it. So this month is, this month, this year, is going to be our training year.
Yes.
And so then, we will go full-fledged, and next year, we've got to train people, because, you know, if you know anything about Pavlov, if they've been trained the wrong way, they're, in Pavlov, he was training, and so he pressed the button, and they would know to come. Well, they've been pressing the button, they've been going the other way. So now, we've got to train them to come this way. So...
Condition response.
Correct, correct. So that's what we have to do. So Kelly and her team are going to be training, they're in schools, they're walking schools. We're making some movement in schools, we're having to put students in different areas because we have them all out in one area, that can't happen. We have to integrate, you know, we do integrate, there are laws that you can't have special ed kids out in the back on, you know, out in the woods, not that we have any out in the woods, but you can't have them, you've got to have them in the building, you know, so we have to do those things, and that's hard. And I'm going back and saying, well, why don't you know this? And so, I just have to face the fact, we didn't know it. And so now, we are training, we're all, as I say, we're using our degrees now. That's what we went to school for, we are all teachers, we have to know, we have, if a person says they're here, and you have seven classes that are all together, and they're special ed, they can't all be together, you've got to mix in some general ed classes in there, so they're not isolated. And so now, we know, now we're held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, please, there are some community groups who want to come and be involved and come in and help. Because as a woman, if I have a son, I can teach him how to be a human being, but I can't teach him how to be a man. So you do need some male role figures, and a lot of these same African, as well as other groups are in households headed by women, who see women, especially in most of our schools, they see few men, that they need to see some male figures who are doing positive things that hopefully can help turn them around. Because hopefully, the more you see it, the more you'll do it. So we got to figure out a way to bring the community in, they want to come in. That if we could utilize some of those groups to help with them, I think it can make a difference as well.
Thank you for that.
And Dr. Faust, I know you, we were in the meeting when we first got the sanction letter. So I know October 15th is a report day.
Yes.
I don't know, so we're just going to, what do we put in that report?
So we will be reporting out some of the changes. So we do have some changes in place, as you know. The board did vote to do an alternative to suspension of schools, so that we're just not kicking them out. However, we have to continue to make sure that students are being supported as their IEP is written. There's also data that has been, I think the entire Wyandotte cluster has received restorative justice training, and so that will be another component that we'll be putting in there. Of course, I can't catalog it all right now, what we're doing, but they'll be able to, we'll bring it back to the board.
Now, do they have to, do they have to rate it? I mean, will they say this will fit that need, or will get the feedback from the report, or what?
Yeah, so Dr. Charles, special ed is her willhouse, and she loves, Student Services is her area, but special ed is her willhouse. And so, prior to this, she was working with the district with 17,000 students, just in special ed. And so, she's done this type of work, so she knows how to get...
Write the reports.
Yes, she will definitely, and she knows how to follow the law and make sure that we are being held, and she will not let us put things down that are not.
Yeah, that wasn't even the concern, but just, I knew we had an October 15th...
Yes.
...reporting date. And so, just the, there's a willingness, and you've expressed this, the state department is willing to work. They're kind of like, really happy to work now. So, but still, there are issues, and that's why I was just saying, do they then follow up and...
They will.
Yes, so there are weekly meetings, in addition to that, about two weeks ago. So every time we, for me, whenever there is an issue that the Kansas State Department of Education has identified as an issue for us, I like to bring the individuals in from the district to be able to speak to all of the coordinators, all of the school psychologists, so that we are all hearing the same message, and we're all able to deploy that message to campuses. So, case in point, we had that meeting with the KSBE a couple of weeks ago, and then from there, every week, for the past two weeks, I've been meeting with coordinators. And so, as a result of that, what they are now charged with doing is reviewing the data for all of their campuses, and setting up bi-monthly meetings with their principals to review the suspension data, to talk about what are the alternative suspensions that are already coming up, to talk about kiddos who may be, we like to call them our frequent flyers, right? So we see them every couple of days for behaviors. What we know is that these are often kids who have gone through some sort of trauma. So it's helping the principals to have a laser-like focus on their discipline and on their kiddos, but not just stopping there, giving them those alternatives and talking them through the issues and how to move forward in the process. So for us, our team, we want to take a hands-on approach with our administrators, instead of just saying, here's an email, here's your data, let me know if you have any problems. There are scheduled meetings to discuss, there, I think we pull it from Tableau, which is great data reports, and that's the information that they're sitting with. And as I have the meeting... And as I have the meetings with our technical person from KSBE, we share this information, well, we will begin sharing this information every week.
Thank you.
We have a plan.
Yes.
All right? Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, at this time, we will now have KCK Library, whereas we approve Human Resources Reporting Recommendations for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report and Recommendations for the KCK Public Libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Human Resources Report and Recommendations for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, it's been passed. We will now have the approval of the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries.
I'd say the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the KCK Public Libraries as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion, please, that we approve? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda.
I wanna make a motion that we approve the items on our consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions? Thank you. Those who are, for everyone who approves the consent agenda, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, it has been approved. Our next thing is to approve our payment of our bills. Are there any questions?
Madam President, I don't have a question on the current bills, but I did get information of, on the question. Could I ask the, explain, help me understand the reimbursement of enrollment expenses for El Centro? Since we don't, we don't have a daycare, I mean, a head start there anymore, right? Excuse me.
The invoice was for contractual agreement for enrollment for July twenty nineteen for one, one student. So, I would have to get with the head start coordinator to figure out who the student is, that there was a bill that they sent over.
Okay.
I will get you the information.
Well, I mean, you gave, I just didn't know, when did we stop having, didn't we stop having head start there?
You're right, as of, well, starting the school year, I'm not sure what that bill is, we'd have to do something to it. You're correct, though, we do not support head start there anymore.
So, is it possible that you could have that information for us at our next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, just another general comment, is, have we considered hiring more full-time people for the nutritional instead of temp help at fifty thousand dollars? Labor max is fifty thousand dollars for temp.
Yes.
And the nutritional services. Have we considered hiring full-time people so we wouldn't have so many temps?
We are active every day trying to hire full-time people. Remember, the board approved the increase in starting pay to thirteen dollars an hour. We was hoping that would lower our need of labor, labor ready. Every day, we have people that's either out, or we have vacancies, and we have to serve the kids, so they're our provider for when we have vacancies.
It should help, the thirteen dollars an hour just became effective, so it should really start making a difference, I would suggest.
Maybe need to promote it more or something?
Yeah, we could do some more advertising and marketing.
Is this a two-week period bill or a month bill?
This is August nineteenth through August thirtieth.
Two weeks.
Weeks.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
I have a question, are these positions part-time, are they full-time?
The ones that we're paying the vendor for?
No, 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 I'm just asking, you said we have the openings, but are they part-time positions?
Full-time, but they're ten months.
They're full-time.
Oh, they're full-time.
Ten months, yes, that's why we lose them, because of the time period in the summer where they don't have full-time employment, so they'll go someplace else. We tried to bridge that gap this summer by having some of them do some custodial work with some of the new buildings.
I didn't know if that was the issue, if it was a part-time position.
No, it's full-time.
Whether it was full-time, so it is full-time.
For the days.
They'll get insurance with the fifteen.
Yes.
Any other questions? So, I need a motion that we approve the payment of the bills minus the payment of El Centro. So moved.
No, that, no, that was already approved two weeks ago, so it's been paid, it's just, what is it?
All right, okay. So, therefore, can we get a motion that we approve the payment of the bills? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve payment of the bills. Are there any additional questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It has been moved and passed. Now, we are ready for our board policy discussion.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the second read and discussion board policy G A R H, attendance, absence, leave, vacation as submitted by legal counsel and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Are there any questions? Any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. Okay, under personal leave, number two, you look at, it says to attend high school, well, the only exceptions to, to the requesting personal leave are to attend high school graduation of an employee child or a stepchild. You know what, I don't know why we don't address foster children.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think they would consider that as an employee's child.
Okay. Could we spell that out?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no problem.
That's why it's in front of the board, yeah.
Okay.
Want to spell that out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, can we get a motion to accept the second read for the board policy of G A R H?
And have it approved as amended by Mr. Brown.
Yes. For absence and leave vacation with the changes being made to identify foster children as submitted by Mr. Brown. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the second read and discussion board policy with the added information. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the third read and discussion proposed changes to board policy C N public records as submitted by legal counsel and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I have one. On the, I guess this is the second, no, first page, first page, under public access, the sentence that ends with, the custodian has reason, if the custodian has reason to believe that repeated requests are intended to disrupt other essential functions of the district, while it is legal, it is, it seems to be, have the tone of prior censorship, and so, I spoke with the, the counsel in the Attorney General's office, and he said, while it is legal, he would not advise anyone to include that in your policies because it, the burden of proof, of course, is on the district, and more than likely, the district could not be successful. And since you said these were reviewed by our board attorney, Greg, were you aware of that hesitancy?
Which one are you, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the copy, what?
C N, read, the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph.
Under public access. Second paragraph.
Second paragraph.
If the custodian has reason to believe that repeated requests are intended to disrupt other essential functions of the district.
Yeah, so, this, this would be part of the language that was proposed or suggested by KSB, if the board wants to take it out, the board can take it out. What it's designed to do is if you have repeated requests for the same information that's, that's causing a disruption to the school, that you can essentially deny it on that basis that the information has been provided, but, you know, ultimately, as the AG suggests, when you have an open records request, unless it falls within one of the exceptions, the school district has to provide that information and that document. So, you know, ultimately, this is really designed to, oh, you, you get some situations where maybe you have somebody that requests like the entirety of the, of the, of the school files, and somebody's gotta have a full-time job going through embedding and deciding what should be provided and what shouldn't, and if you have repeated requests for that, it becomes almost a, an undue burden or expense on the district, but that's a pretty extreme case. Most situations, this would never come up because most information, at least if it's in documentary form, is pretty easy to distill and decide, okay, this is something that can be provided, or this is something that can't be provided, so...
First, you are gonna give them a bill first to say that it costs you twenty thousand dollars to get reproduced, that should ensure that action.
That should end the problem if you have somebody making large, voluminous, hard requests to resolve out, so...
It may be a cosmetic point, but I'm just delivering the message, and that is the, what the AG suggested.
As I said, if it's something the board doesn't want in the policy, certainly take it out, because it's, it's probably unnecessary, because it's probably something the board could, or could be addressed anyway if you have somebody that's making a repeated request.
Well, I recommend that that sentence be deleted.
Do you have a suggestion as to how we could reword it if necessary?
Probably just delete if it's a complete sentence, you don't want a sentence fragment, but that the custodian has reason to believe that repeated requests are intended to disrupt, but you'd have to clean the sentence up. Because it, you, the placing, I would say maybe, you, you still have the right to refuse if a request is an unreasonable burden on producing public records, perhaps you could put the period there.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Got that?
Any other...
So, I would make that motion when the proper time comes.
Any other questions or comments? So, therefore, could we get a motion to accept the third read and discussion of board policy C N public records with the exceptions that were made? So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept board policy C N with the exceptions that were placed, that were mentioned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready to accept the third read and discussion policy for C N A document.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept for the third read and discussion proposed changes to board policy C N A document production, including electronic information as submitted by legal and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Are there any questions or comments? So, could I get a motion that we accept the third read for board policy C N A document production, including electronic information? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept that. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're now ready to accept the third read and discussion board policy EBBE, emergency drills.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept for the third read and discussion proposed changes to the board policy EBBE, emergency drills, as submitted by legal counsel and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions? So, could we get a motion to accept third read and discussion board policy for EBBE, emergency drills? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept that. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're now ready to accept the third read and discussion of board policy G A A, goals and objectives. Any comments? Any questions? Could I get a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept board policy G A A, goals and objectives. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now ready for board policy KG, building usage.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education review board policy KG use of district facilities as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a, go ahead.
I think this was the one where we were going to discuss the Good News...
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Dr. Faust, was there anything you wanted to say?
So, can't even remember the date, we'd gone back before and included updates from the board as a, as we had, I think we, this isn't the, the recent update, I'm looking for the last review of our district facility usage, and we had taken out items that the board did not want and put items in to make them read succinct. I'm looking for it.
Well, if you guys want to talk about that, it's in the agreement.
It's in the agreement.
It's not in the policy, the issue that was brought up last time, if I, if I might, was there was a group that had appeared before the board, I can't remember what, the Good News Group, is that the right name? Good News Club, I apologize. And they had made a request to the board as to whether they could utilize the facilities free of charge or without charge, or ask the board to waive the charge. So, that's permitted under your policy and in your facility usage agreement, which you have to, to click on the actual policy in your policy list, and the agreement's at the bottom, and you can click it, I think it's paragraph, I'm guessing four, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but there's one of the paragraphs that says that a group that is aligned for school purposes, that's a charity organization or non-for-profit, can utilize without the facility use fee, but under your agreement that the board approved, they would still have to pay for any custodial services or security services that the district incurred beyond their ordinary... beyond their ordinary cost. So, um, the administration can allow the group to use, if a group falls within that definition, your administration has the authority to let them use it free of charge. They don't have to pay the charge, but they would still have to pay for janitorial or security services. So if the board is wanting to waive those costs for this organization or for a different organization, the board would have to make that by motion. So that's why it was being brought back in front of you. Or if you want to change to that, this is the time to have that discussion as to whether that's something you want to modify or change.
Well, in conversation with Dennis Covington concerning this, um, there were a number of schools that submitted, uh, internal use requi, I'm not sure of the official name for it.
As for the use of the facilities by the Good News Club, if they run that organization through the school as a school-sponsored activity, those fees are waived.
And so what was, what is happening is that they're partnering with the principals, and principals are able to fill out a form to exclude them for the fees because the principal signed off that it, that they're working with them. And in the proposal that they gave to us, that was one of the resolutions, is that they would partner with the schools in order to help support the academics of the school so that there would be that additional support.
So has that been resolved?
Yes.
I, I had another group asked, the PTA's, who said they weren't allowed to come into some of the buildings, and they had to pay. Now, this is what parents told me at a meeting. So I didn't know.
No, PTA's not have to pay.
Okay, well, you need to express that to some of the principals. They are charging.
Right. And, and what we were told is that we would have to get the sign off from the principal in order to meet, because we were meeting at the library.
It comes with no fee.
You, you were correct.
Okay, well, please pass that on, because some of the parents were saying, and I, I didn't know. All I told them, I would bring it up.
Yeah.
Training them.
Oh, okay, because they, they were a little upset and wanted to know, we're the PTA, why are we paying? And I thought, well, I'll bring that up. That's a good question, because I don't have an answer for that. And I'm not going to lie to you, I'll bring it up. I assumed that the PTA could meet freely in the building, and they were saying they were being charged.
Now, if they were meeting after the building is closed, like on a Saturday or at night, they would have to pay for the custodians.
I guess my question is this, if it's the PTA and it represents that school, they shouldn't have to pay anything. These schools have pop machines, they're making money off everybody who's coming in the school, and why can't some of that money be used to pay for whatever time they come in? We're saying the PTA, we want them involved, and then we're blocking them at the same time. That doesn't make sense. Well, I'm just telling you what they said. They said they had to pay. They wanted to know, why are we paying? Our kids go to these schools, they represent us, so why can't something be done that we work that out? And that's a good question. We want them involved, and we're keeping them out. Now, I'm not saying you per se, but we do have policy. So we got to figure out and clear the message up.
Um, far as the policy, they would have to pay. But I agree, they should be working with that principal to cover those costs. But the, uh, the cost has to be covered either by the school or the district, and those costs are not included in the budget that you all approved.
No, no, I get that. I'm just saying, I thought if a school has a budget, they, everybody has the pop machines, they're making money, why can't that money come out of whatever extra little fund? They're selling candy, they're selling trash bags, they're selling everything else. So why can't that money be used to pay for the PTA? I get what you're saying. I'm just saying, they brought it up.
In typical, or I won't say in typical, in some educational settings, um, as our CFO was stating, if, let's say if it's on a Saturday, um, and the PTA wants to meet, and they want to have a, a raffle or some type of carnival, they typically do pay for the, um, security, they pay for the custodian, the cleaning, that part they pay for, because someone has to pay for it. That's just what I've been, that I've known of. And if, if it's during school hours, I've never known PTAs to have to be, um, to pay for those. It's only if it's after hours where they come to an agreement of what they want to pay for. But I have seen that happen in, in school districts across the country where if it is literally on a Saturday, if they're doing something, they will, they'll typically ask, how much is it? And then there's a.
No, no, I get you, but they were upset. I didn't have an answer. I just said I'd bring it up. I didn't know. And I just found it hard to believe that we're charging the PTA for some things. It should be within that school's budget, work that out with them.
And do we know with schools?
You know what? It was so much going on. She didn't say the school, she just said, could you please check? What is the policy?
Well, maybe what we could do is to look at what the policy is, as well as which schools are charging, and then come back with the report.
I mean, what your, what your contract or, I mean, the policy doesn't speak to this, that your contracts that you guys have approved for, for use of the facilities all speak to this. And all of them, it's when you have custodial or security or nutritional services or any other school personnel who are required to work beyond regular hours, that the cost is borne by the group using the facility, whether that's the PTA, the Good News Group, whoever. Now, that's just what your current board policy directive is. So if you wanted to look at modifying that or looking at doing it a different direction, then you need to consider and decide how you want to do it. But that's just what it is right now. And that can be, that's something that can be waived by the board, um, if the board truly wanted to do it. But it would have a cost that you guys would be bearing if you choose to do that. And you need to make sure that stuff is uniform across the board for your, for your groups that you're using the organization through. And so funneling back through the schools is probably the better course.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The, I haven't had no experience with the Good News Club, but I was just reading their presentation. And if we have principals partnering with the Good News Club, and they teach all of their, their social emotional curriculum from a Christian perspective, is that not a violation?
Without knowing specifically what, um, what is occurring or in the, in the curriculum or whatever, I can't, I can't answer that question. There's not, there's nothing per se that prohibits the school from partnering with a religious organization in some aspects, as long as it's not for a religious purpose. And other, and you can't prohibit a group from utilizing your facility because of religious basis for the organization as well. So, so your, your organization has to be, um, I think of the right word. Basically, it's, for non-religious purposes, a religious organization can use your facilities just the same as an, as a religious, as a non-religious organization could. As to whether the curriculum that's being utilized or the message is being utilized, obviously you can't have a school partnering up to teach Sunday School in a, um, school building where school officials are, are participating in the teaching of Sunday School lessons. That, that you can't do. But if it's a church group that's coming in to assist with homework or to assist in things of that nature, the fact that they're, a religious-based organization wouldn't have any bearing on that.
Okay, just, it's in their proposal, it says they teach all of the principals from a Christian perspective. So everything that they're coming in to teach, if I understand correctly, is from a Christian's perspective. There's a lot of different religions out there. And we need to respect all of them. And if we make an exception for one, we're going to have to make an exception for all. So, that's, that's, that, to me, this is different from the caring for kids when they come into the schools to do things. This is definitely a Bible study type of curriculum. And I think we need to be extremely careful about who we make exceptions for, because the next person may offend us personally or impersonally. It's just, it's, it is a very big quagmire to be stepping into.
And how long have they been in our schools?
About 16 years.
Yeah. If they've been in our schools for 16 years, it's just kind of odd that this would be a year. Uh, that's all I'm raising awareness to, is that for 16 years, this group has been in our schools, and this is the first year we're causing doubt. That's just a concern for me.
And I kind of had concerns too, that it said that there were 17 local churches involved, but we had someone from Grandview with a P.O. box that was speaking. So I, there's, there's a lot of things we need to look at before we start making exceptions for one group not to have to pay a minimum to use the facility, and other ones not.
And, and I don't think anyone's asking for an exception, but for them to go through the partnership route.
I think the only concern, and, and again, I don't, I don't know what this organization does or doesn't do in the school buildings. We would, we need to be cautious that if there is, um, a religious piece to the messaging, that the schools aren't paying for that. That's where you would run into the issue. The, any organization can use the facilities on an equal, equalized basis, so that's not the issue. And again, without knowing what the group is doing one way or the other, like I said, if they're coming in and helping people with homework and doing things of that nature, that's not a religious-based use of the, of the facility, so it wouldn't be an issue. But if it is something that is more religious-based, like I said, a Sunday School, we just, the school treasury can't pay for that. That's, that's where you.
We need to make sure that the parents understand that this is not a school-sponsored activity if it is religious instruction.
They do tell them that. And they also, it's an option. You don't have to send your kids. It's a choice. And some people send them. We talk about character ed, that's where they align with us. And when we look at what's happening with African-American males with suspension rates, they've helped immensely, trying to help these kids turn themselves around to be positive. And it's just going back to what we teach in kindergarten, thank you, excuse me, you're welcome, to be respectful of others. Now, that's the message I got when I went to visit some of them, and I know some of the people who teach it. They said, we have to be real careful. We don't want to cross the line because we know the separation of church and state. But we wanted to just come in and give a positive message about caring and respecting each other.
Okay, so I, I do know that religion is a part of their teaching. It, they do teach the Bible. I, I was with the program at one time, and I was teaching content from the Bible. And what we have to do as a board is to make a decision as to whether or not we will accept this, follow the protocol according to what is necessary. But as Ms. Humphrey said, it will lead us down a different path, whereas other organizations may want to come in as well. So as a board, we will have to make a decision.
But again, they have a choice.
No, no, not now.
Well, I thought, and help me for clarity, we're voting to allow a group to come in, not per se them, but since they asked, they asked for it to know an answer by September the 9th, today is the 10th, that as long as they were going to work within the timeframe that the schools were open, they wouldn't be assessed a fee. Now, that was the understanding I had.
Well, what we're, we're going to, uh, make a decision as to whether or not we're going to accept board policy KG building usage, and if we need to postpone that and, and vote on it at a later date. But while we're looking at this, we're considering the Good News Club does need a response.
I think technically, I don't think there's a change being proposed right now to KG, the policy.
Just to review it.
Yeah, I was just up there for review because this issue had come up with the Good News Club in their request. As I understand it right now, the Good News Club would fall into the charitable organization, so they would not be charged a fee. The only thing they would be charged is if there are custodial or security services that are incurred beyond what the school is ordinarily paying. So if they would be during this, the time that you would have security there or custodial services already there, and Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, there would not be a charge. It would be events that occur outside of that normal day that would require a security person or a custodial person to be present. They would be charged for under the current process. So the question is, are you wanting to change or waive that for this group? That's the question I think is coming up, because that's what they asked, as I understood it. So if, if you don't, if, if they're not going to be here during a time when the buildings aren't already open, um, I, I think you're, I don't think there's any change required. I, I think they're, they're already there. The question would be, if they're going to be like a Saturday, is that what we're talking about would be the problem?
So when do they, when do you presently meet?
We only meet when the school has a session.
That's what I'm thinking.
Like, why could we use a Friday if kids are not there on Friday? We don't have it.
Yeah, so, so it should be a non-issue. That, that's why I was trying to understand the timing of it. Because that's why you got that provision in there, is if you, if the district's incurring costs for staff to come open up a building and clean up after an event, and, and that's passed on to the organization. But if not, then it's, it's not, as I understand it. Is that, is that accurate, Dennis?
Not entirely.
Okay. I, I didn't want to misspeak, so I want to make sure I got, I got it right.
If an organization that is not a partner wants to use our facilities during a time that custodian and security are there, they are charged.
Okay.
But this group, where, what I recommend that they do is to meet with the principals and become a partner of the school.
Right.
Now, if they can become partners of the school, it becomes a school-sponsored activity. Then there is no charge, because they are now partner of the school. And the principal would submit, permit, and not that organization.
That's the issue.
So even though they would be a religious group, would that be acceptable according to the law?
What, what's meant by partnership with the school? Does that just mean that they are an organization that is, is.
A school sponsor, like club.
I, I'd have to, I'd have to think that through a little bit to make sure it's not crossing the line on the, um, religious piece in terms of the sponsorship part of it. I think you could have partnerships with religious organizations. I just, I worry about this, I worry about the school sponsoring it. That's what I worry about. And I know that sounds like just, uh, language nuance, but that's what I would be concerned about.
So is it necessary that we need to table this?
If, I, I, I think that if the decision or the discussion is to whether to allow or permit the schools to sp, to sponsor this, given that caveat, I think I, I need time to look at it more carefully to make sure you're not crossing the line on the, on the church-state issue. But in terms of the facility use request, what, what are the fees that would be associated for a non-sponsored group? Is it just the custodial security service fee?
Yes.
And what does that usually run for?
Have in front of me, but it's about.
125 is what was in the letter. A few cents. About 125 is what was in the letter.
Average to $35 an hour.
And the custodians, what, 25, I think? Yeah.
And that, and that's charged even if the, uh, schools in session or if it's during the school day?
Right, if you're an outside organization.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that we waive the fees for the Good News Club until the issue is resolved.
It has been, the motion has been made that we waive the fees for the Good News Club until the motion has been resolved. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I need a second. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. We are now ready to go to recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved. We will begin at eleven twelve. Eleven fifteen, and then we will re, we'll need how many? Fifteen minutes, and we'll be back at eleven thirty. May I get a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we move to executive session at eleven fifteen and to resolve and come back at eleven thirty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're recessed to executive session. May I get a motion that we come out of executive session? So move. Need a second? It's been moved and seconded that we come out of executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We are now ready for communications, starting with our superintendent, Dr. Faust.
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of updates today. So I know that we have been making some changes or things what I say should have been happening throughout all organizations and actually is happening in most organizations. And so there had been a stir about safety in the building or not allowing people to come to the building. Well, that's not true. That's not how that reads. It's that if you are coming to the central office and you are not an employee, you do have to wait downstairs and someone has to come get you. You cannot wander around. You cannot just walk into someone's office. That's just what most people do. They have to wait and then someone has to come get you. And we ask our employees to then walk them back down to the floor where they were to make sure that they get to their exit wherever they are going. So I want to make sure, just give some clarity behind that. Also, if you are an employee of the district, no one ever said that you couldn't come to the district office. That is not what it said. If you have an appointment with someone, of course, you know, just like anything, if you want to be seen, you need to make sure that you're there for the appointment. But no one is saying that no one can come to the district office. So just wanted to clarify that. The extra duty pay being removed, we did do some updates. And, you know, the extra duty that we're paying, I'll start. I think the most, the recent one was games, coaching, the, I think it was the athletics and after, not actually the coaching, but gatekeeping and the concessions. Well, we were paying about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime for those individuals. And so our exempt employees, who were our administrators, were not actually even there. We were paying people to do their jobs. So what we've done is revamped and actually have administrators at those gates making sure that they can do it. And for videotaping, we've given them suggestions on how to do it. We were paying an individual to actually videotape a coach's game. It's like, hey, there are students who can videotape, use the students to do those things. Those are just some of the things, just some of the background knowledge. What we actually happened, and I'll tell you, is that we embarked on someone's part-time job. Bottom line. When you think about two hundred, we only have five schools. And so you think about twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand for the entire year. That's a lot of money. And so, yes, we did do that. The other thing was administrators in the classroom providing feedback. All teachers deserve feedback, all. Sumner too. Sumner is, yes, they're number one in the state, but they're not at one hundred percent proficient. They're not. So as long, and they had some concerns, and that's why I'm calling them out, because my daughter does attend there, shouldn't probably have said that on, but she is there. And I have some concerns. I've actually had questions. And so we are. No one escapes feedback, no one, until you get one hundred percent. Or I told the schools, "I'll leave you alone once you get to ninety percent." You know, the problem that we find is, okay, we do have one of the top performing schools in the state. So you don't train anymore once you get to the top? No one can tell you what to do? But you have to understand, the top school is roughly around forty-five percent proficient. So my question is, what are the other fifty-five percent doing? Because remember, they have to be at seventy percent to get in there. So then, what are you doing? So yes, you're going to get feedback. We're going to align, so you no longer get to do what you were doing. We are going to make sure that all schools, all schools, all teachers receive feedback. Principals are going into classrooms, offering feedback. That's what we wanted, administrators to be able to do it. That's what high-performing schools do. That's what high-performing school leaders do. You give feedback and you have to know what's going on. We are continuing to make positive changes. And what I'm realizing is that our schools and our leaders, and we're just not used to what everyone has been getting for years. And so it feels different. But we're only giving you, literally, you're just getting the bare minimums right now. We have to be in a mindset that it's not necessarily change, it's change for you, but other school districts are already doing this. You know, you think about it, yes, we made some good growth because, you know, we had accepted that eleven percent. So think about twenty-three thousand students, only eleven percent at one point were proficient. So think about, if we do the math really quick, we do ten percent, that's twenty-three hundred kids. So what were we doing with the others? And so we say the thing, so fourteen percent. That was the year before. No one said anything about that, but we are talking about, oh, I can't come or I can't get my twenty-five thousand dollars in my paycheck for extra duty pay. But no one is looking out for those students, because right now, we're still only at eighteen percent. Or the nine hundred thousand dollars for sanctions that we were not telling people that we needed to do these things. So we are making change. We're being extremely transparent. And I promise you, board, there aren't any, I tell you, I don't do the stick and move, shake and bake, any of that stuff. We just bring it out. And the bottom line is, pay attention. Pay attention to the work that's going on. When people are saying things, ask them, "What's your performance rating?" When teachers are complaining, ask them, "How many kids are being proficient in your classroom?" When principals or someone is saying that we're not hiring, tell them to take a look at the vacancy report and the hiring report that you get. That's, we did tell principals that if you didn't meet your numbers, which that's common, we have a school that had a hundred, they were down a hundred. We did close those positions, because you can't hire because you don't have the kids. And we had another school that gained a hundred. So we have to be good stewards of the money, and that's just how we do it. And so it's not that there's a hiring freeze. It's just that you can't hire the teachers because you don't have a space for them. You have to have a budget code for people that you are going to hire. And so again, I would tell people, direct them back to the vacancy report or the hiring report that the board gives. We're still hiring. We're hiring for positions where we need the people. And if you lose a hundred students, you lose positions. That's just how it works. There's a formula, and we'll be more than happy to break that formula down for you. But there is a formula. You cannot remain at the same staff. We can't fund you at that same staff if you lose a hundred students, because that's about four positions, at least, four positions. So those are some of the updates that I wanted to give, just for clarity. But again, I would just ask, when people are griping and complaining, ask, "Is it a student issue or is it an adult issue?" Because is it an emotional response? Because a lot of this is emotional responses to change. And people are content with being eighteen percent. Well, we won't settle until I've told them. That's not excellence for me. I think we've done some great work moving six percentage points in an area in one school year, and we were down three, four cabinet positions. And so we did some great things. Now, it's all ayes on, and I mean, we had, I think, three or four, three, I think, three IOs last year. So the support that we have now, I do expect a difference. And it's never going to be good enough. I'll promise you, it'll never be good enough until we can make sure that all kids in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools are receiving a high-quality education, and we can all sign our names to it. So again, keep pushing. We'll keep pushing, but we're focused on education, and excellence is a requirement. So that's where we are. We'll see you at the parade on Saturday. We did have a fun time this past, as we were out with the bands. And I'm glad I had worked out before so that I wasn't sore. But we were high-stepping on Saturday. So we'll see if Leavenworth can high-step too. And we'll make sure that we have some ice water, ice cold water for us and a respirator if we need it.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. I'd just like to say that I like the spirit that's within our district because we are transitioning. Rather than focusing on the negative, we're looking at the positive things. And it's a time of excitement for us to come together and to support every way. And I see that we're moving in a direction, not only to support each other, but also to make sure that our parents and our community understand. So with that being said, on Wednesday, October the, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, August 28th, I went to a gathering where there were women elected in Wyandotte County. It was a meet and greet at Greg Goheen's law firm. And so we were just there just to meet each other and talk to each other. And it was a good time to just be there together. On Thursday, August 29th, I went to the, I came to our central office to talk to Greenway about the strategies that we're going to do to work towards student improvement. On Thursday, the 29th, that same day in the evening, I went to J.C. Harmon as the principal presented information to the parents about their graduation changes and trying to keep them informed and getting support. On Tuesday, September 3rd, I came to the central office where there was a Kansas City-Kansas School Partnership kickoff with Caring for Kids, ways in which they were reaching out to the community and getting others who were looking to become involved so that they can go within the schools to help support our students, both financially as well as personally. Friday on the, I'm sorry, on September the 4th, I attended the orientation for those candidates who are running for the Board of Education for the election in November. On Friday, September the 6th, I went to the ribbon-cutting ceremony here at Welborn Elementary and loved it. Was supposed to just be here for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but ended up going into a third grade class, reading a book to them. And I was really mesmerized by their response, as well as enjoyed doing it. Reminded me of my teaching days. Then, right after that, I went to the central office this past Friday where we sat down and looked at the agenda to plan it. And then on Saturday, September the 7th, was the Central Avenue Parade. Before the parade started, we walked at least two blocks to go to all of the high schools and even elementary schools that had representatives there just to take pictures so that they can see us in that. And then we had to get back on the bus. But yet and still, it was a good time to just meet out with the community. And I saw that we got a lot of positive responses from the people as we were going down in the parade. I think it's a new era, a new time for growth and success, and I'm very excited to be a part of it. Thank you.
I want to say thank you too. I had a very, very busy two weeks as well. Attended, of course, the grand opening here, and I had the chance to read with students and got a chance to speak with them and see their heart, to know, hey, who all knows what they want to be when they grow up? And the teacher and I talked, and the vice principal and I talked about how we changed careers later in life, although we were on one path, we changed to another path, which led us to our destiny. And that's the message I gave them is, you know, find joy. A lot of times when you're an adult, it's hard to find that little kid joy. But joy truly comes when you know where you're supposed to be in life and how you can help spread it to others. So I've shared my journey to becoming a board member. Also, I did attend the Wyandotte County meet and greet for elected women officials. That was a great opportunity just to get to meet other women in Wyandotte County and network. That was really awesome. Also, I did attend a number of community events. The parade was really fun. It was nice to be able to meet the staff, the chief of staff, Dr. Faust. Many times, we see them here in the meeting and passing by, but there's something about when you're out there in the heat and walking. Everyone has strengths and weaknesses. We dance with the bands, you know. We talked about playing a clarinet, flag, and all of that. But it helped remind us that we are here for the children. Every decision we make, everything that we do, we have to remember what our motto is. Inspiring excellence. That's what it said before Dr. Faust came. Inspiring excellence. So as we continue and as I continue on, I am involved in the community, and it was good to see that feedback. And a lot of people came to Dr. Faust, Stephen, everybody they saw, they came to us asking questions. And it was so good to have that community involvement and engagement. Thank you.
I was very happy to be at the Caring for Kids kickoff and the Welborn ribbon-cutting and reading to the third graders one of my favorite books, Diary of a Worm. The kids loved it. I read it to my grandchildren when they were little. It's a funny book. Volleyball has started on the middle of the high school level and a couple of high school volleyball games. Saturday, I missed the parade because I was in Topeka. I was the representative from KCK for the KSAB nominating committee. So we are nominating someone for the next president-elect. But thank you to everyone who tweeted out the photos that they took. I felt like I was there going through Twitter, looking at all those photos. Thank you so much. I went to the Elected Women in Wyandotte County meet and greet and the parent meeting at Harmon. But it's, I'm so glad for school to be back. My evenings were awfully empty this summer, and now they're going to be very, very full along with the daytimes. And like I said, thank you so much for all those pictures. I felt like I was part of the parade after all.
I'll take it. Well, congratulations on being at the parade. I did the afternoon session. Did not include any walking. Watched the horses, but. So that was interesting. And of course, the long time, the grand marshal being the longtime Mr. Watson. His commitment to this community is just off the charts. Went to the community meeting on the 29th, and that, we were listening. And there's still some serious concerns that we invite people to come to the meetings to express. There's another one I saw on Facebook on Thursday, and I plan to attend. I am running for reelection, so I had to come meet the administration here. So I did see the preview of the presentation before. So nevertheless, we're here to serve.
Okay, I too went to that community meeting. And I think anytime that we can meet with the community, and they need to hear us, we need to hear from them. And there were a lot of people who concerned. And contrary to popular belief, people in this community do care about their kids and wanting the best for them. They may be poor, but they understand education is important. And they had a lot of good questions, very concerned. We tried to be honest and forthright. If we don't know, we'll find out. And that's when the questions came up about PTA. And there were some other things about their concern that sometimes when things appear in the media, that we need a response. Sometimes we don't say anything, and when we don't say anything, that leads to a lot of misconception. And the media we have some around here is not always truthful. If those who were there, I know what they did to me, it wasn't fair. And I will keep saying that because they don't always, I don't want to sound like 45, but fake news. It does exist.
It continues, but you're not by yourself.
Yeah, so, but we need to hear when we get an opportunity and just reach out. And at least, if they have questions, try to answer. If you don't know, you don't know. But we'll try to find out and find an answer for you. But people do care, and that's the part that's so important. If you're, some of you out here, you have children. Who wouldn't want the best for their kids? And they don't have to settle for mediocrity. We do have a good school system. We just have to work to make it better. We do have a good school system. We just have to work to make it better.
Yeah, I'd just like to say something that just popped up today that I wasn't really aware of. And when I talked about, when I brought up Parker Elementary School, I think the superintendent mentioned that that is going to be designated as a bilingual component, and I want to applaud him for that. That's forward-thinking. And one of the things that, when I came on this board, I was really part of what I was trying to introduce to the system is bilingual education. And I made a couple of trips to Topeka and I saw Magnum School. And I've had conversations with Dr. Faust about this. And I'm just glad he's moving on, moving up on it, a little forward-thinking because if you look at the demographics, you see that fifty percent of our schools now are Hispanic school, Hispanic population. And that reflects kind of the demographics of this world. And so, you know, in preparing our children for the future, there's no way we could not address that issue. So I just want to thank you, Dr. Faust. I appreciate it, and anything I can do to support that even after, I'm not going to be running again, but I'm here for you.
Thank you. All right, one other thing I want to bring up is Randy Westman, who is CFO and at the KASB operation. They are going to be meeting to consider having KASB workshops here within our central office for 2020, 2021. And so more than anything, we are going to encourage board members to be able to sign up to attend. And so we'll be getting more information, and we'll be updating and letting everyone know. With that being said, our calendar of events that's coming up, and I'm not going to go through everything, but just want to point out that tomorrow morning, there will be a remembrance ceremony at Washington High School at 7:45 a.m. because it is 9/11. And we would encourage board members who can and will be present. The Leavenworth Parade is on September the 14th, as well as the Kansas Teacher of the Year recognition, which is at 5:00 p.m. on Sunday at the Overland Park Sheraton. And we also want to make note that the first Saturday in October is the Silver City Parade at 10 a.m. And we will be updating everyone else about the other events that are coming up a little bit later in our meetings. Again, we want to thank everyone for coming. And before, right after we adjourn, we're going to do some visiting into the classrooms here in this beautiful building. So may I get a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our meeting and that we will begin classroom visits. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned.